Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening. Welcome to the April 2, 2019 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started this evening. Clerk, go ahead and please read the roll.
Councilmember Staley?
Here.
Brackey?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Nightzert?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
All right, we're honored tonight to have Pastor Phil Tagg from the Ransom Church with us. A great guy, good friend, and I would ask that you would rise and stay standing for the invocation, and then we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance immediately following. So Pastor Phil, thanks for being here. Let's pray.
Oh, Jesus, we come before you tonight just humble and aware of our need for you in our decisions tonight, and so we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and play. Help them as leaders not to first ask, "How do we fix this?" But first to ask, "What do we need to learn? How do we need to change? And who do we need to listen?" Remind them, because we all forget from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political scene and political debate today, that they are not only our leaders, they are also our servants, and that is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone's our neighbor, and that throughout the ages prophets have called leaders and people to respect and protect the least among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in mind, body, and spirit, the stranger, the immigrant in our midst. Grant them and grant us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and true, and to speak out when it's time to speak out, to listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen, and may we always be guided by a spirit of community and a spirit of love. I pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm going to have Counselor Selberg come forward, and we're going to present this month's superhero award.
Thank you. Come on up, John. Get in the middle here. Well, this is our monthly Citizen Recognition Award, and this month we are honoring Mr. John McIntyre. John has been actively involved with the banquet since its founding in 1985, and currently volunteers at least 15 hours per week. His service to others includes volunteering at his church, delivering much-needed clothing to the Native American reservations. He cares deeply for the less fortunate and has a deep passion for helping others. This passion is also reflected in his public service. That includes serving in the State House of Representatives in 1999 to 2000, and the State Senate from 2001 to 2002. Late last year, John was interviewed in a story featuring the banquet and its need for volunteers. He stated that, "We're putting food in their stomach and hopefully hope in their heart." John's years of selfless service is a testament to this hope, but also action, action to improve the lives for those who struggle in our community. John's decades of service to this community and those most in need exemplify what it does mean to be a superhero. Congratulations and thank you for your service, John. And just a quick reminder, if you have anybody that you know out there in the community that's going above and beyond and being a rock star in our community, we'd love to have them up here and honor them next month, too. So just go to SiouxFalls.org. There's a superhero tab. Very easy to nominate, folks, so hopefully you'll keep that in mind. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Marshall, and John, thanks again. Congratulations. Thanks for all the work you do at the banquet. All right, council, let's move on to item five, approval of our consent agenda.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion to approve by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion, council? All right, a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brackey?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes. That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to our regular agenda, item 35. Look for a motion on that.
Move to approve Erickson.
Second, Selberg.
Okay, move to approve by Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion, council? All right, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brackey?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that's passed eight to zero. We're now at the general public input portion of tonight's agenda. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and total lasts no more than 30 minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on in the agenda. For regular agenda items, following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. So at this time, anyone who has public input for our general portion can come forward, and clerk, it is 7:07 for the record. Good evening.
I'm John Mathias from Sioux Falls. I've used the city website a lot the last month, particularly for flood-related information. The website's always a useful resource. It could be more useful, however. As with many things, there's always room for improvement. For example, researching issues that have been covered on city link programming is difficult, if not entirely absent. I hope the Innovation and Technology Department regards something as relatively old-fashioned as an internet site as still being worthy of attention and continual improvement. I went a little deeper on the website yesterday on the city council webpage to the agenda packet PDF, something I never looked through before, and scrolling through that, a familiar business name on the "Award by Vendor Approved Contracts and Agreements" document caught my eye. I think this pertains to item seven on the agenda tonight. So I looked at more of those 20 pages of labor service contracts, and it was surprising, as I'd never considered before, who cuts the grass on street medians and around public structures, and who washes the windows of public buildings. If I'd been asked prior to this to make a guess, I'd have assumed city employees did it. But apparently, these tasks have been determined to be most efficiently administered by contractors, and I'm in no position to challenge that determination, as I have no idea about the required manpower versus other standing commitments of city grounds maintenance staffers. However, the taxpayer cost is not entirely inconsequential. Over $50,000 for mowing, fertilizing, and weed spraying, and window washing adds another $25,000. However, I'm curious as to whether work release inmate manpower, traditional or transitional living, and/or even sober living house manpower would be available for these seasonal tasks requiring little training. It would seem a win-win situation. In the case of work release or trustee manpower, I believe the city could obtain labor at a deeply discounted rate in the case of persons transitioning from incarceration, or persons recovering from addiction and residing in a sober living house. It can be difficult to be hired to satisfy their work requirement while in transitional housing. In this instance, perhaps, the city would get simple landscape maintenance at a wage cost lower than a service bid for a for-profit contractor. Such a municipal labor program using persons with imperfect work histories or problematic legal records would not be without issues to solve. It would never eliminate the need for some maintenance-related outside contracting. However, if Sioux Falls is indeed a city committed to innovation, I believe pursuing and developing such a labor program could be a source of pride for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. I better pull those down.
Sure.
I'm here. I'm Bridgette Myers. I'm from 6209 West Oscar House Circle. I'm from the Parkway Village development that went through your process, and two weeks ago, I was watching a city council meeting, and I was watching a neighborhood that got a rezone reduced to twin homes behind their homes because of the impact it would have on single-dwelling homes. I guess it really struck me as pretty unfair that they were treated that way, being in the southeast part of town versus the west side of Sioux Falls. I didn't understand why a group of neighbors were treated differently than we were. What was in those PowerPoints and classy presentations that changed the development to twin homes? Because we presented a lot of information, too, and it was actually thrown back at us in a meeting, slid across the table and not even looked at. I have concerns when I hear a city employee make a statement about citizens of Sioux Falls having chips on their shoulders. I know several of the neighborhoods that have been through this process, and I assure you, each one of them was treated very badly by the planning and zoning department, and I can tell you that it hurt pretty deeply as I listened to them insult some of the neighborhoods about that. I do not feel, as the motto is "One Sioux Falls" for the administration this year, that that was much of a "One Sioux Falls" statement. I think he owes the public an apology for making a statement like that about neighborhoods. I can tell you, when I first approached Mr. Bieber about a three-story apartment complex ruining my beautiful neighborhood and being a blight in our view, that I was told that it's always the same thing out of all the neighborhoods: traffic, noise, and property value, and that after the building goes up, it's usually not as much impact as you think it will be. That was the blanket statement before I had even had a relationship or even had spoke to planning and zoning. I got a very chip-off-the-shoulder comment. It's not right. I think there needs to be some policies and procedures for planning and zoning, because what happened to my neighborhood and several others is not okay, and it is not fair when we're treating other neighborhoods differently than we are others that are going through the same thing. One of the things that I would suggest is that planning and zoning meetings, all side meetings, need to be recorded because there's stuff being said in those meetings and misinformation being given out that isn't true. No decision should be made until all parties have the information that they are requesting before those meetings are held. I can tell you, we were a victim of that. And lastly, my main concern is that we do not continue to do this to neighborhoods. If we're going to treat one neighborhood with private meetings and four city council people, I couldn't even get Councilor Stephen come out to my neighborhood to visit with me. No one returned my emails, my phone calls. I was treated a lot differently than that neighborhood. So I'd appreciate you considering that, that this is not how we continue to do business with neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sierra Berthold Sioux Falls. Yesterday, Ms. Yang Zhang, Cutler Law Firm's tenant, pled guilty in the courtroom. She pled guilty of knowing and hiring unlicensed massage therapists. The charge that was dismissed was massage without a license, count two, and no sales tax license. I want you to understand that law enforcement has been working very deeply to catch these people. Do I think, and does law enforcement think that prostitution and human trafficking is existing in these businesses? Absolutely. There is stuff that they are doing that is scheming law enforcement not to get in and catch them for prostitution. As of right now, there are some leads to Mr. Cutler's property, and more arrests is going to be made to Mr. Cutler's property here. Okay? So, Cutler Law Firm, this doesn't look good for the office manager and property manager for Cutler Law Firm, Christine Fritzmeyer. Also, I would be pleading not guilty for my court arraignment tomorrow if, in fact, that the prosecutor, for every godly reason, wants to prosecute this with the evidence that you saw on Facebook, a council member that his name was mentioned will be subpoenaed in court also. I want to stress and let people know this. As I'm uncovering more and more of these people here, for the last week, we're talking about millionaires doing illegal sex crimes, can't begin to tell you and open up my mouth of these people. So when I say Ken Cutler's Law Firm, I mean Ken Cutler and investors of these properties that are doing this, and it's not only just him doing this. I hope that City Hall does not let politics get in the way and let the chief of police, pounder, I had made the street crime unit pounder on these investigations here, as I'm bringing more and more to the police department on these issues, and I'm digging, and I'm digging, and I'm digging more into these issues. Hopefully, that these people that are high-powered in Sioux Falls and has money and are millionaires doesn't let politics get into the way of their arrest, and justice will be served in the judicial system here. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. Catherine Riffle, Sioux Falls, advocate for the homeless displaced and those that need assistance. I've had a lot of people coming to me and asking me to talk with them and meet with them. I've recently been asked again. I will be meeting with those people, and I'm not backing down. When bodies are floating in the river, be it suicide or not, they were still homeless. I went out to the campsites the other day, and lo and behold, the belongings of the deceased was still there. I'm not going to be one to volunteer to clean up the parks. I have enough on my plate. I ask yous to clean up your city. You have a congregation of people out there, a community, that are not like yourselves. You're sitting in those seats, supposed to be responsible and accountable for your actions, your decisions. That's what I ask you to do now. Step up and be a righteous person. Help those that need it. I've gone to the courts with a couple of the fellas and gals, and they're knocking their charges down to misdemeanors, but they're still getting labeled. That does not help a job situation. I heard someone earlier tonight talk about bringing the inmates out and work. What's the matter with getting the people down at the centers down there? They have talents. They're good people. They just have rough times. Those that have illnesses, they need medication. If you don't get your medication, you know yourself you're up against a brick wall. So I just ask yous all to think again what yous are doing and where you're at, why you're in these seats, and I've been noticing they have a lot of complaints coming from the community, be whatever part of the community they're from. So somebody's lagging somewhere, and if you want to give me the dollars to sit there and do what yous are doing, which is nothing on a lot of cases, I'll gladly take your money, but then I dish it right back out to the people. So I ask you now to reconsider whatever yous are doing, fix it, clean it up. Right now, we have nowhere to go after 3:00 in the afternoon. Of course, now with April 1st, the weather has changed, but where are they? Still on the streets. Like I said before, I was disgusted in our community here as far as leadership goes. I ask you now to prove me wrong. Other than that, I'm sorry we lost some more good people, because I knew them in their hearts. I knew them what they were worth. I'm out there helping to dress them and take them to work, et cetera, get them back home, what they call home, and branch under the trees. I'm sorry yous didn't recognize this sooner, and I'm sorry my friends are passing away on the streets, but they're counting on me, and I'm not going to let them down. That's all I can say. Good night.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, people. I'm Stephen Ciano, once again, and as other people have aired complaints, and I have indicated, it was a complaint of mine that what was going, what was being presented as a complaint had not been in the summary, which you call minutes, online as a complaint, and I want to say that it was much more accurate since I did make that point. However, I, as the first speaker in public input tonight, just made clear, there's a lot being said that is not, or a couple of them. You have the technology. You have the resources. My idea is that every word should be transcribed. People shouldn't have to sit there and listen. It should be right there available, as well as every letter that you people receive should be readily available online for the public. This is something I've been saying. So I will leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Good evening.
I don't know if you guys read the Argus Leader over the weekend. Very good article, if you want to read it. I'll pass it around to you guys when I'm done. I've been trying to say this for so many years, it isn't even funny, but the only people that can change it is the people that sit up here. I know that if I was mayor, and I know you're challenged on this same issue, it's time to act like adults. You stop acting like little children when you're up here. People can see your faces. They can see the faces you make at people that is up here talking, and they see your faces when you're talking to different council members. I've been trying to tell you guys this for so many years. It's time to grow up. This gal sees it right on, and there's a lot of other people that are starting to see this, too, because when I talk to people, I tell them to watch the city council meetings, and then I want to hear from them, and they see it totally, that you guys either you act like adults or go back to kindergarten. But I also look at John. He sort of took a little bit of what I wanted to come up with, is we got a pothole epidemic. We have been nursing potholes for the last seven years, Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid. What we need to do is we need to have some kind of a work program where people are coming out of the penitentiary or coming out of even the boys ranch, giving them a chance to do something, to make themselves, how do you want to say it, better? They can bring themselves up instead of staying down, and they can't find a job, and they're back into jail again, and they're back, you know. We need to turn it around, and to be able to start a work program. We need people to fill potholes. We need to fill potholes correctly. We need to clean them out, and we need to put asphalt in them. I've been watching people put asphalt in holes that have water in them, that has mud in them, and how far is that patch going to last? One week or two days? The city needs help. There are a lot of people out here that are willing to work but can't find jobs, and if they do have a felon on their record, a lot of these guys are not going to hire them. But on my rental properties, if a person has a felon, that doesn't bother me. I'd let them go ahead and rent because they need a second chance. But I think the city owes these people a second chance, and I appreciate letting me talk.
Thanks, Tim. Anyone else this evening? All right, clerk, next item, please.
Item 37 is a new 2019 retail wine and cider and new 2018-19 retail malt beverage and South Dakota Farm wine licenses for a Perfect Ten Nail Salon, 2528 South Loraine Place, CUP not required, pending final inspections per fire, health, and building services. Item 38 is a transfer of 2019 retail wine and cider and 2018-19 retail malt beverages and South Dakota Farm wine licenses from Fernston Tap House LLC, Fernston on 8th, 201 North Weber Avenue, to Books and Brew's Pizzeria, 201 North Weber Avenue, CUP not required, pending final inspections per health. Item 39 is a 2019 retail wine and cider and new 2018-19 retail malt beverages and South Dakota Farm wine licenses for Hagary Ethiopian Restaurant, 2113 South Minnesota Avenue, with conditional use permit 9802-2019 being approved on March 6, 2019, pending final inspections per health. Item 40 is a transfer of a 2019 retail wine and cider and 2018-19 retail malt beverage and South Dakota Farm wine licenses from Cadine Hail Red Sea Pub, 921 East 8th Street, to Red Sea Pub, 921 East 8th Street. Item 41 is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Washington Pavilion to be operated at LG Everest, 350 South Main Avenue, number 400, for a special event on April 10, 2019. Item 42 is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation to be operated at Avera on Louise, 6100 South Louise Avenue, for a fundraiser on May 2, 2019. Item 43 is a special one-day wine licenses for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated to be operated at Envy Studio Salon, 106 West 11th Street, Nyberg's Ace, 200 East 12th Street, Palmer Lee Boutique, 206 South Phillips Avenue, Rayfield's Art and Framing, 210 South Phillips Avenue, Rug and Relic, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 114, Say Anything Jewelry, 225 South Phillips Avenue, Simply Perfect, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 108, Sticks and Steel, 401 East 8th Street, Suite 118, and Young &amp; Richards, 222 South Phillips Avenue, for a fundraiser on May 3, 2019. Item 44 is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for El Riyad Shriners to be operated at the History Club, 758 South Phillips Avenue, for a luncheon on May 4, 2019. Item 45 is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Washington Pavilion to be operated on Main Avenue between 11th Street and 13th Street for a 20th anniversary celebration on June 1, 2019. Item 46 is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated to be operated at 8th and Railroad Shopping Center Parking Lot, 401 East 8th Street, for East Bank Block Parties to be held on May 4, June 7, July 5, August 2, and September 6, 2019. Item 47 is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated to be operated on the River Greenway from 6th Street to south of 8th Street, including Raven Industries Riverfront and parking lot located at 205 East 6th Street, to include the prairie area between Phase 1 River Greenway and the Sharapa Place Parking Lot, north to 6th Street and south to Sharapa Place, for Downtown River Fest on August 17, 2019.
Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I am here to answer any questions you may have on items 37 through 47.
All right. Thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items this evening? All right, council, do you have questions for Jamie on any of these items? If not, I'd take a motion here.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, move to approve by Kylie and seconded by Sale. Any discussion, council? All right, a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brackey?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight to zero. Item 48.
Item 48 is the second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the 2013 Shape Places zoning ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, five to zero.
Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is our Shape Places zoning ordinance amendments. We went through these twice at a land use committee in that first reading, so I'll go through them rather quickly. We're looking at changing some definitions, specifically bed and breakfast, aligning them with the South Dakota lodging definitions. We're looking at doing an update for that duplex spelling that I indicated last time to really get a clear definition of what a duplex is. We're looking at adding the dance studio as a use that's allowed in a recreation facility, and the main reason for that is to allow them in the office zoning district. And then we're trying to create a definition for primary form, which would go along with our land use table map that we have here. That form would be a form our forms most commonly use and best represents the zoning district. We had a primary form designated on this map, but we never really had a definition in the beginning of our ordinance. We're looking to do some form amendments as I indicated, allowing accessory daycare units within apartments. That was specifically to allow some of these after-school programs to go to the apartments, do after-school, and not have to bus the kids to their facilities. Looking at adding the AD4 form to the RA1 zoning district, and then we're looking at moving the bed and breakfast standards, taking them out of every single form that we have them and move them back to the conditional use section, allowing some additional height limits for spire, steeples, towers, and other architectural ornamentations. Specifically, we have a lot of churches within the NF1 form and to allow them to have those steeples, and then to allow assisted living facilities as a permitted use in the downtown area. We're also looking at doing Specifically, we have a lot of churches within the NF1 form, and to allow them to have those steeples. And then to allow assisted living facilities as a permitted use in the downtown area. We're also looking at doing some landscaping buffer yard changes, allowing trees as an option to screen drive-throughs. Instead of, right now, most of them had to use fences. It just created a tunneling effect, especially on a lot of our arterial streets. So to allow them to do the option of putting some additional ornamental trees seems like a better use. We're looking at allowing to group trees into clusters, but also maintaining separation distances, so those trees can be maintained and be healthy. We're allowing, excuse me, some ornamental deciduous trees under power lines as 100% of those requirements. Ran into where those power companies have to come in and cut them, and it really hurts the integrity of the tree, so to allow a shorter tree underneath them will benefit everybody. And then we really wanted to require some additional plant diversity within our buffer yards, to get a buffer yard requirements to look similar to this picture, instead of all, instead of doing all trees, or all bushes, or all coniferous, we wanted really a mixture of all of them. And then we also are allowing, are proposing to allow the director to sign off on landscaping that's in, is required to be in drainage, electrical, or gas easements. Those have to be moved out of there. This would give the director the ability to still require them in the front yard, rear yard, or side yard, but not within those electrical drainage or gas easements. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right.
I just happened to see that part on the buffer. I'm in one of those situations where I have a fence, and another neighbor in my hill-sided street has a fence, so all our other neighbors do not. It's all open. So now, the proposal that they're doing with the buffer, to put a fence there, we're going to create that alleyway. And I've been to a lot of major cities, and what's happening when you have that alleyway is then they have to put a fence at the end to keep people from sleeping in there, living in there, smoking, doing drugs, everything. And right by the high school we're at, we have a lot of that, people smoking behind our fences. And so I do think that that is good, that you're opening up the variety, because for me, I would prefer not to have the fence, but I, you know, obviously, my neighbors wanted the fence. I do like the variety of trees. I'm allergic to evergreens, and it seems like all the developers want to put evergreens. There's a lot of people allergic to evergreen trees, so I like that they're opening it up and doing a variety of trees. So I like what they're proposing to kind of give a little more flexibility and options for developers, because we were a victim of kind of that buffer guideline, and it's nice that you guys are looking at changing it.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this? Counselors, do you have questions for Jason on any of these items? Counselor Nitzert?
Just another statement that, as you watch planning commission meetings, you were seeing applicants come up month after month, getting alternative site plans for landscaping for what were pretty obvious issues. For example, they would be required to put trees in a certain area, but there might be an easement running through it. Well, what are you going to do? So this saves people having to come back and pay application fees, and go through all of this for what are very obvious things. To her hypothetical or her question, could you address for, right now, today, let's say that you have a property line. In my backyard, I have a fence at the property line. Somebody develops behind me, and they now have to put in a buffer yard, and they have to put in some sort of a fence, let's say. What happens in that case, where, you know, many times, it might say it's supposed to be 10 feet from the property line? What coordination or discussion might occur that might eliminate a fence, or does that work through?
Yep, great question. We do, as you know, have the option in the buffer yard to do a fence or a berm. Sometimes berms don't work because of drainage issues, and so, as you said, if somebody has a fence, they would still be required another fence. That's really what those alternative site plans, buffer yard plans are for. If it's something that the developer would like to do different, and the neighbors would like to see something different, it's really being able to go to that public hearing and not doing a fence, but doing additional landscaping, providing a lot more units, or maybe increasing the actual buffer yard setback. So that's really the mechanism.
And I think we have maybe seen that, where a developer will come in, the neighbors will also come in and say, hey, we already have fences. We don't need another fence. We would be happy if they would put in more trees. Everybody's in agreement, and that can be approved through that process.
Yep, that's why we have those public hearings for that.
Okay, great.
Other questions for Jason? Counselor Staley?
Jason, if someone wanted to start a bed and breakfast, first of all, let's clarify again, because the first time you presented this, you said that it couldn't be a single-family home, and then you corrected that, right?
Correct. It can be on any, the rooms can be on any level of the home.
You just, for a bed and breakfast, you have to live in the home?
Yep. These are the requirements that we would be having as part of the conditional use sections, where it'd have to be 800 square feet of floor area. They have to comply with the South Dakota Department of Health Lodging License for smoke detectors in each room. We really want to make sure that they have those additional off-street parking spaces as part of the bed and breakfast.
And so if somebody wanted to do this, would they just call you up and say, we're in? I mean, so this could actually, anybody in Sioux Falls could do this if they wanted to, right?
If they can meet these criteria, yes. Typically, we see them in more historical areas, or areas that they want to, you know, more.
Right, but they could really actually be in.
Absolutely.
And what number would they call if they were interested?
They would call the main planning line, 367-8888.
88. Thank you, Jason.
Any other questions? Counselor Erickson?
I have a follow-up. How many do we have currently in town for the bed and breakfast? Because I know it's really not that common.
Great question. Shawna Goldhammer in our office had these three that are currently licensed by the state as bed and breakfast, so we have three in Sioux Falls.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion on this, Council? Motion to approve. Nitzert?
Second, Selberg.
All right, motion approved by Nitzert, seconded by Selberg. Any other discussion on this? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Next item is a second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located north of East 41st Street, south of East 33rd Street, east of Veterans Parkway, and west of South Faith Avenue, from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density, RA3 Apartment Residential High Density, LW Live Work, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, C3 Commercial Community, and CN Conservation Districts. Petition number 9853-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero with the following conditions: that the LW Live Work zoned parcels, as shown by exhibit, allow development of the following forms, AD1, AD2, AD3, MD1, NF1, NF2, UT1, UT2, RE1 forms.
The applicant here is Perry Cole. The owner is the Burns family. As you can see, it's located at the northeast corner of 41st Street and Veterans Parkway, and goes all the way up to 33rd Street. It's about 105.4 acres. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a future office, apartment, townhome, twin home, and single-family residential development. As you had seen on base, there is actually two ordinances that are attached with this rezoning case. The revised mittel, as seen here, which would be ordinance 0051A, is the one that we're requesting the council approval on. This is the one that had the few changes, specifically the RD2 portion that's along 33rd Street. That went from Live Work to RD2, which would allow two-story townhomes up to 10 to 12 units. And then the Live Work section on the southeast corner of 33rd and Veterans Parkway, that went from C2 to Live Work. And that's something that was requested by the neighbors, and the developer didn't see any issue with doing that, so.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for Jason on this one? Counselor Staley?
I just have a comment, and Jason and I talked about this before the meeting, but what he's describing here is really the best of procedures within our city. And we heard a citizen talking at Public Input earlier about how it wasn't quite that smooth for their area out at the Oscar Howe area. But for this particular neighborhood, they had four city council members who were present when the citizens got to come in and have the staff present, and as you just heard Mr. Bieber say, that the citizens, they actually had some PowerPoints. They had a really nicely packaged presentation of things that they needed, and that's great. It worked for them. My concern, and I know the concern of some of the neighbors moving forward within our community, is it shouldn't matter if you live in Norton-Frolig, up in the northern part of our town, or if you're over at Oscar Howe, east, west, north, south, we should all be treated the same. And having four counselors present to advocate or to listen for one neighborhood, I think this would be a great thing to have for all neighborhoods, that when we have something coming up, we have their counselor representative, which these people had, with Counselor Kylie showing up. Counselor Nitzert showed up. He is the guru of zoning. Having him there's a great thing. And then Janet Brecky and I happen to be there, too. So I hope we'll be able to give the same customer service, customer representation to all citizens as we move forward. So thank you for your help in this, Jason.
Any other questions for Jason on this? I entertain a motion on it.
Ms. Mayor? Move to approve.
Second, Erickson.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion, Council? Counselor Brecky?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, there's been a, I've received a couple of emails about sharing some concern from other neighborhoods about how this appeared to be treated differently by the city. And I did respond to those emails, and in fact, I was just responding to Bridget, you know, because she spoke about it at Public Input. I think it's important to understand exactly what's going on here, and that is that there is a new administration, and there's a new way of thinking about the role of the Planning Commission, and I think the role of the city council in, you know, in land use issues. And I've had several conversations with Erica Beck about, I guess, returning the Planning Commission to more of an intermediary discretionary board, instead of strictly land use board only. And I've also talked to her about encouraging, if not even mandating, that developers meet with neighborhoods before, you know, before they even make their application, in a pre-application process. There's been no talk about actually codifying that at this time, but it's, you know, being floated around as a, let's try it and see, is a suggestion. So I just want the other neighborhoods out there to know that the fact that we've had some difficulties as a council, dealing with your issues as, you know, at the council level, we are working internally and with the administration to come up with a better process, a more mediative, facilitative kind of role for the city, you know, between the developers and the neighborhood, to try to bring things to the council, you know, where there's been more give and take, so when it gets to the council, it's pretty well resolved, except for those finite issues that neither party can do that. I just think it's important for all the public to know, since we had a couple of inquiries about that, just feeling like this group was treated specially. In essence, we did, we kind of were experimenting with a different process, and I think you'll see more of that, more experimenting with that along the way, and I hope it leads to better results and a better involvement by the neighborhoods and a participatory level at an earlier stage. So I'm in favor of this, and I do intend to vote it, and I do think it was a good example of how good that can work.
Counselor Nitzert?
I want to speak for myself, but I also want to stand up for my colleagues. All eight of us spend a lot of time with neighbors on every rezone. The idea that just because somebody's from the southeast district, which is not my district, by the way, that I would spend more time with them and not spend time with the Keene Park neighbors? They're my constituents. All of us spend a lot of time on phone calls. We meet with neighbors. We go out to their sites. We email. It happens all the time. Really, the only difference here is that this developer was willing to concede on these items. That's it. The developer could have said, no, I'm not going to, and forced us to vote on it, and we'd vote on it. So I, once again, the process can be improved, but I, it's just, it's a smear on this body to insinuate that we give special treatment to one district.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Erickson?
I have a motion to amend by substituting the exhibit with the exhibit contained in ordinance 0051A.
Second.
All right, motion by Counselor Erickson to amend the exhibit accordingly, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion on that amendment? Let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We're on item 50.
Item 50 is a second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the southwest corner of South Ellis Road and West 22nd Street, from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and O Office Districts, number 9886-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero.
The applicant and owner here is Kelly Nielsen. It's located at the southwest corner of South Ellis Road and West 22nd Street. It's about 22.42 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a predominantly single-family residential neighborhood, and then reserve one office lot adjacent to South Ellis Road.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for Jason? Counselor Nitzert?
The notation about the mutual access easement, is that so that those properties to the south will have an access up to 22nd Street, and you could close those off in the future? Do you see what I'm showing there? A mutual access easement will be required through this area to allow connectivity to the lots to the south, and connectivity to 22nd Street.
There probably will be until it completely develops.
Because there's single family there right now, and it'd be...
Yep.
Okay.
And as we go through the specific subdivision plan, we actually have the preliminary subdivision plan coming up later tonight, and then as we get into development engineering, we really hone in on those specific roads and where things are going to go, so.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions for Jason on this? All right, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion to approve by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any other discussion? A vote on this, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 51 is a second reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 6400 East 41st Street, from the AG Agricultural District to the S1 General Institutional and REC Recreation Districts, number 9934-2019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero.
The applicant here is Jeff Crater, representing the Sioux Falls School District. This one is located at the northwest corner of East 41st Street and South Faith Avenue, just southeast of the previous rezone for the Burns property. It's about 23.1 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at building the Benjamin Rifle Middle School.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for Jason on this? Motion to make?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
Okay, move to approve by Erickson, and seconded by Sale. Any discussion? A vote, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
This one is located at the northwest corner of East 41st Street and South Face Avenue, just southeast of the previous rezone for the Burns property. It's about 23.1 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at building the Benjamin Rifle Middle School.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Councillors, do you have questions for Jason on this? Councillors? Okay, move to approve by Erickson and seconded by Sale, any discussion? A vote, please.
Councillor Member Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero, item 52.
Item 52 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 3920 South Hawthorne Avenue, from the RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density District to the O Office District number 99282019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero.
We received a word from the applicant late this afternoon that they are requesting to defer this one to the May 7th City Council meeting. They're looking at doing a little bit more due diligence before they intend to buy the property or get the rezoning to go through, so.
All right, so I guess, first off, is anyone from the public to speak on that item? All right, then I'd look for a motion then to defer this to the May 7th meeting. Any discussion, council? All right, a vote on that, please.
Councillor Member Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero, we're on item 53.
Item 53 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the southeast corner of West 85th Street and Southwestern Avenue, from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the RA3 Apartment Residential High Density District, petition number 99322019, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero.
The applicant is Essex Communities, the owner is Rounding Companies. It's located at the southeast corner of Western Avenue and West 85th Street. It's about 4.61 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the Essex, excuse me, Communities is looking at constructing a three-story apartment complex in two separate phases. A large portion of it will be done in Phase 1, and then a smaller portion adjacent to 85th Street in Phase 2. We did have some concerns with the neighbors along West 87th Street. Their main concerns were people parking on the streets, they were worried about proposed parking for this specific use. They are proposing to have 130 underground spaces, which is over one per unit, and then have a 90, roughly 90 above-ground parking spaces, which for a total of 220 units, which is about two and a half times what they're required, so they should have plenty of parking to hopefully alleviate those concerns. They also are required that level C buffer yard along the east property line, and that would include a 30-foot setback, four-foot berm or six-foot fence, and 40 units of landscaping along there.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councillors, do you have questions for Jason on this one? Councillor Knightsert?
Just an observation that I understand the concern about parking, but there are some jurisdictions that actually have parking maximums, so you couldn't do this sort of thing. I don't know why, but in this community, we tend to overbuild our parking big time, and you end up with seas of parking lots without cars in them. Now, I guess that's their decision, but it's just an observation, I'm not endorsing two and a half times of parking, but I will move approval anyway.
Second. All right, that's moved to approve by councillor Knightsert, seconded by Kylie. Any other discussion on this one? All right, a call for a vote, please.
Councillor Member Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, next item.
Item 54 is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 160 zoning to modify the buffer yard requirements in the Form MD2 Multiple Dwelling Medium. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Knightsert?
Thank you. Some of you have heard this once, some even twice, so I'll try to go reasonably quickly. The purpose of this ordinance is to address the concern when there are lack of transition from a three-story apartment next to a lower-density use primarily single-family homes. Obviously, it's preferable to have a stair-stepped transition when possible, with lots of land out in new developments, that's easy to do. However, that's not always possible, as the city matures, neighborhoods change, land uses change, areas develop and transition, so we have infill development, and that's where we run into problems sometimes in this regard. However, rigid and inflexible policies that do not recognize that perfect transitions are not always possible threaten to prevent reinvestment in neighborhoods that need it may contribute to blight over time and contribute to urban sprawl, which has a negative impact on the city, including but not limited to expanding areas of the city that we have to provide services to, creating more areas not serviced by public transit, and a whole host of other problems as the city grows out instead of up. Essentially, the problem is, is that we've heard that when there is a three-story apartment next to a single-family, it creates a unique concern when all other things are equal versus a two-story apartment, and that's because of that height, mass, and scale. There's an example of the MD2 form that we've talked about before. The proposed solution will increase the setback in buffer yard requirement when the building is three stories in height and the yard is contiguous to a lower-density form, and that means it's touching a property line. I'm not asking to require that extra setback when there's a street in between, because a street creates the natural setback, requiring a larger setback, even if there's a street in between, would make projects unfeasible, because then you end up having to do a large setback on multiple sides, and you lose a lot of buildable area. And really, the major concern has been people that have their properties touching these apartments. Again, you've seen this before, this is just an example that shows how it would work. The larger buffer yard and setback, the level C buffer yard would kick in when the property is touching a single-family use, the number two below, and up at the top, the single-family, the number one, it wouldn't kick in, it would stay as it is today. I did solicit quite a bit of input, talked to planning staff, they're invaluable, because they can give you decades of history of what has come up in the real world, what have they seen, what are the challenges, what are going to be the unintended consequences if you make certain changes. I solicited input from various people that build apartments, all of which, on this list, with the exception of one, did sit down with me in person, and were very happy to, and we had very, very helpful discussions to talk about the pros and cons and the challenges, and everything ran the gamut, of course, of, on their end of, "Don't do anything, it's fine," to, "This is great, and we should do something, because I recognize there's a problem." On the other hand, citizens and neighbors, I did reach out to them, I'd got some good responses. That, of course, ran the complete gamut, everywhere from the obvious apartment should never be next to a single-family, this won't do anything, you know, that sort of thing, all the way to, "Thanks for taking this on, and anything helps," or "This is great." So, obviously, it completely runs the gamut, and there's a lot of emotion involved, and I totally honor that. I do need one minor cleanup amendment. I had one little cleanup here, however, in the ordinance that we discussed earlier tonight, they, the planning staff also made an amendment to this section, they did almost exactly what I did, they used just a slightly different word, and we can't have conflicts here, so I'm just going to ask to withdraw this part. This part is not germane to the main part of the ordinance, so it was cleaner for me to withdraw my part, so I'm just asking for that. And finally, in summary, this amendment is based on stakeholder feedback. It harmonizes three-story MD2 forms with other three-story forms. There's other forms in the zoning ordinance that are three stories that require a larger setback, and it recognizes what we're hearing from citizens, it's narrowly tailored to provide unintended, to avoid unintended consequences, and looking at all of the rezones that have happened in the last three years, which I did look at all of them, it reflects what either developers are actually doing, or in the infill case, closer to what we have been imposing. And one final note, the biggest challenge, and I totally get it, is this is not enough. I get that. The problem, again, is that we can add conditions to a rezone in the outlier cases, the controversial ones, we cannot remove regulations. The worst thing we could do is go too far and put conditions in place where projects that are not controversial just won't work, and they won't pencil out, because these setbacks have real-world consequences. It takes away buildable area, you get less space for units, and projects will not work, and they will become completely unfeasible. So, that's why we have conditions to handle those particular cases, and it's also really, really tuned into looking at all of the forms in the zoning ordinance, and what setbacks that they require to make sure it keeps that harmony, because as you look, as the land uses intensify, the setbacks go up. So, if you were to put something like 60 feet on this one, or whatever else, you now throw everything out of whack, because as an example, if you put a Walmart next to a single-family home, it requires a 45-foot setback. So, it would make no sense for a residential structure to require a 60-foot, for example, unless one is willing to state that a three-story apartment is more intense than a Shields or a Walmart and all of that traffic that it generates. It throws the entire system out of whack, and so had to try to preserve that stair-stepping. So, it's an incremental step, and I think there's going to be more discussions about how to improve the process, but I think it's a step in the right direction, and I appreciate support. Thanks.
Thanks, councillor. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
I wasn't sure I was going to get to stay, but I did. I found someone to pick up my kids, so. I'm Bridget Myers, I'm from the Oscar Howe District. I have met with councillor Knightsert about this. I mean, obviously, I would like to see it more, further away from homes, and I understand that this is something. It's a Band-Aid that will help try to heal some of what the damage has been done in the city from some of the developments. Obviously, this particular ordinance wouldn't have helped our case, we actually wanted it 100 feet from our home, so to only get it 60 was a huge disappointment to our home, or to our neighborhood. We would have also liked to have just had twin homes or two-story behind our homes, something that would have fit with the neighborhood. Particularly, what we liked about it is that it was homeowners that would be owning those and caring for their yards, other things. I had big concerns about a commercial property behind my home and having to deal with a home-owning association, which is what we're going to be dealing with, not the developers. The developer, Mark Mickelson, told us that as soon as the project is done and all the apartments are sold, or the units are sold, he's out. So, that leaves a whole another issue, because you're no longer dealing with the developer, you're dealing with a home-owning association of a development now. My big thing is, I think two-story, 30 feet would be great. Three-story, I think 60 feet minimum. The buffer yard thing, for me, I would have liked to have seen the developer connect right to my fence and go all the way down. The way that they're doing it's going to create some issues, and they're only fencing seven houses out of 15. So, we're going to have a half a fence that's going to go through seven yards. Really, what's the use of the fence? So, I feel like there needs to be some stuff with the buffer to allow some leniency to, maybe we don't have the fence, or we tie into existing fences, so that we have it all flux, you know, it all flows in the neighborhood. I appreciate you bringing something, I do appreciate that, being my councilperson, I do appreciate them bringing something to help the neighborhoods, because we had to hire an attorney, and not all neighborhoods can afford that. One of the other suggestions I would have going forward is maybe consider, too, the appraisal of the homes. When you're having $300,000-$400,000 homes, it is a big impact to have a three-story complex behind your home. You know, if you've got rentals and lower-income homes, you know, could there be some leniency there based on property values of the area, too? So, just some suggestions, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Amy McKeon, and I'm from the 85th and Breton area, a lot of you know me. So, that sounds great, but I'm still in the world, and I want to know if this is going to apply to me. I am still residential, not in the city limits, so does this apply to me, is what my main question is, does it apply to us? So, we already have an amendment for the south side, which is 40 feet, so what does this mean for me? Am I going to get 15, or am I going to get 30, or what? Because it's three stories. I mean, I didn't understand whose proposal is this.
So, what we can do is, you can finish your public input, and is that your question? We're not going to engage in a debate with you, but...
Okay, so, just to reiterate, we did come to the council, oh, we have the, oh, we're up there, that's us right there. So, my whole property line is on the east side of this development, and comments were, you know, made last time we were here about, "Well, we don't care what she's going to do with her property, rezoning it." I'm residential, and I'm staying residential, as far as I'm concerned. My children want it to stay residential, so that's my main concern, of what's going to happen to me. Not that I'm grateful that this is, you're trying to work it out with us, that's great, great to hear. So, I guess that's all I really have right now. She's gonna... Okay, because we did want twin homes also. Well, there's the picture, so you can see how close that, if you can see the fence line there, or where I'm standing, that's me looking at my house, that's 10 feet in, or actually, yeah, 10 feet in, right? And then, on the other side is looking back over to the fence, and that's, see how close that is? So, that's, it's going to be a concern for me, and if they can bring their parking lot all the way up to that area, or anything, that's going to be very disruptive in the household. But, so, thank you for listening, and thank you for working on it.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input on this item?
My name's Scott Kelly, I'm actually in the process of moving to Sioux Falls. Just one question, is this going to take into account line of sight from those third-floor apartment residents to the adjacent yards? Because that's a concern my wife would have in that situation, is I don't want somebody out there on their balcony looking down on our kids in the yard all day long. And I'm just wondering, is that something that's been concerned, been considered?
So, what we'll do is, we'll take all the public input, and then I'll give the floor back to councillor Knightsert to address these issues. Is there any other public input tonight on this? All right, councillor Knightsert, I'm going to turn it back over to you to...
Thank you. I was not trying to be rude, our protocol is, we don't go back and forth, we wait for input, so I'm going to answer both questions. First of all, in your particular issue, I did take a look at that rezone very closely very early on, and yes, that setback does apply whether you're annexed or not. The fact that you have a house there makes you residential, period, and that's the way in which the zoning ordinance is interpreted. So, the 30-foot would, so right now, I think you'd have a 15-foot, and now you get the 30-foot. As you know, I think in their, in their plan, they were talking somewhere in the 30-to-foot range they might be able to pull off, but it wasn't, it wasn't, we didn't condition it, it was just what they were going to try to do. But yes, this would increase the setback that you get on that property. Nothing changes as far as properties that aren't annexed, so that's not touched, so you'll get that. As far as the line of sight, there's nothing in the zoning ordinance that addresses that that has been brought up as a concern in the past, that runs into, there's a lot of different structures where that would run into an issue, but it's, it would be something to think about, you know, perhaps, and, but then you'd have to get into angles and fencing, and how are you going to take care of that problem? So, but no, it's a, it's a very interesting question. But to be honest, no, it's not covered in my ordinance, nor is it covered anywhere in the zoning ordinance, to my knowledge.
I'm going to ask for a motion, then we can move into more discussion if we need...
Move approval, Knightsert.
Second Erickson.
All right, motion by Knightsert and seconded by Erickson. Why don't we go ahead and get that amendment off the table as well, and then we'll discuss the amended motion?
I'll make a motion to remove Section 3 from consideration. Knightsert?
Second Erickson.
All right, any discussion on that amendment? Let's take a vote on that, please.
Councillor Member Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, so now we're on to the amended main motion, and is there further discussion on this, council? Councillor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I mean, there's certainly no perfect answer on this issue, as we all know, and it's something we come across more and more often, the 85th and Breton item is a perfect recent example, and it comes up more and more often, and it's going to continue as we grow. We had the Brett and 85th. We had the 6th and Bonson, and then we had the Oscar Howe Properties. And to me, I do empathize with people who are going to have a three-story apartment building in their backyard, and you will be able to look into your neighbor's backyard. You will have people looking at you. And we used to have a sense of transitioning, and that seems to have gone by the wayside. And so what I'm hoping for, and I said this to Jason, is that I'm hoping that we can take a second look at the Shape Places Ordinance, especially referring to the zoning part, and let's bring these people into the conversation who've actually experienced it, get their feedback, so that we can tweak this to make this the best fit for all of our citizens. Because yes, we are growing, but we got to have some common sense as to where we put these multi-housing units. And I'm committed to respecting the integrity of neighborhoods. People have paid money to live in a nice neighborhood, and having a three-story apartment complex in your backyard is not what they signed on for. And I don't care if it's because they live next to a church, or because they happened to buy an open field that they were maybe told by realtors that that was going to be developed into something compatible. We've got to nail something down. And Joy Schroeder sent us an email, and she was very active in that Brett and 85, or excuse me, the 6th Street and Bonson area, that Lacy Farm, which if you happen to drive by that area now, used to have an old farm site, horses. Drive by, it's desecrated now. Trees have been uprooted. And those neighbors were really working for something that would be very compatible and beautiful for the neighborhood. And what Joy sent us this morning is that she was commending Councilor Nightert for what he's doing, but she was saying that there was a site plan that was given to them, and now that's been changed. And that's the other thing, we need to nail this down so that we get a firm concept to give to the citizens, this is what we're going to be passing. This is what it's going to look like. So we don't have all these open-ended possibilities happening, and then, once again, the neighbors don't know what they're going to get left with. And I think that can be done, but we just have to take another look at this thing to firm it up for a better result going forward. So thank you, Joy, for your information. Thank you to all the citizens who participate, step up, and speak. And thank you, Bridget, for continuing to come back and stand up, because sometimes it just takes a few people. Even if you seem like a minority, your voices are being heard.
All right, thank you. All right, any other discussion, councilors, amended motion on the table? All right, I'm going to call for a vote on this, then.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
That passes eight to zero. We're onto Item 55.
Item 55 is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by adopting the 2018 International Fire Code and amendments thereto.
Good evening, Dean.
Good evening. Council Dean Lanier, Fire Marshal of Sioux Falls Fire Rescue, here to present to you the 2018 International Fire Code with amendments. As we briefed in the informational of this, we've tried to do our best job in summarizing and bringing the code into something that was much smaller, easier to digest. So today, I have a few slides to go through with you and try to answer any questions that you have. The 2018 International Fire Code presented to you covers additions, modifications, and provides some summaries, as well as significance of the code changes. As far as outdoor pallet storage, we've had a discussion previously on this. This code requirement is providing height limitations and separations to building and property lines for the outdoor idle storage of pallets. This only applies, and going back and checking throughout the city of Sioux Falls, we have prospectively one business that is in this type of business. I have not been able to make contact with him, but you can be assured, we will talk with him before we're back for a second reading. Lockdown plans are in addition to the fire code. In this addition to code, we are implementing some changes for school lockdown plans. Oddly enough, we are likely already ahead of this in most of the schools that we already have within the city of Sioux Falls. So these are nothing more than best practices being implemented in code to ensure that when you have a lockdown plan, it's been reviewed and approved by the fire department. We spoke previously about this issue of lower flammability hazards with refrigerants. This is primarily a technical issue dealing with mechanical systems and refrigerants inside larger buildings. When you have large amounts of new refrigerant that's on the market now, that's replacing ammonia as a primary refrigerant, those have specific hazards, and this seeks to deal with some of those hazards from those gases. Fire pump and sprinkler riser rooms. This requirement primarily affects those large structures that would have either a separate riser room or a separate sprinkler riser room. It doesn't affect every building within the city of Sioux Falls. There's not too many of these that we have currently. And based on its application, it won't be used broadly across the city. It is really for some special applications. One example that I can give to you, there's a large warehouse building in the northern section of Sioux Falls that actually has an exterior pump and riser room. It is not an often-used application, but when it is, there's some basic code requirements and criteria here that are provided for those. Integrated fire protection system testing. One of the things that we talked about previously was that the largest structure we have within the city of Sioux Falls, the Event Center, is a large structure, but it has very complex and unique fire alarm systems, fire detection systems, and fire sprinkler systems. It is an air management system that goes along with that as well. So when we have these very technical applications of multi-systems expected to work in unison during a fire event, we are requiring that they make sure that they test them in unison as well, and not test them as independent systems. It would be a little bit of a misleading if we just test one item as opposed to all of them integrated together. Aerosol fire extinguishing systems. This is requiring suppression for domestic cooking systems in care facilities. We talked about this previously as well, that these aerosol systems are cost-effective, they are smaller systems. It is a specific application for new construction within care facilities, and it is only required for when care facilities have shared cooking stove tops. In those few cases where it does, these systems can be used to provide equal protection that you would find inside of a restaurant. Previously, we've talked about deletion of fire code requirements. In this case, this is one of the first ones that we have. This deletion is occurring for a retraction on the need for fire alarm systems in R4 occupancies. These are primarily group homes, assisted living care facilities, that type of thing. Because these buildings are already sprinkler-protected, there is no real need to have fire alarm systems inside of them. So this allows the requirement to be deleted. Group R3 and R4 protected within FBA 13D systems. This is an addition to code that's actually allowing increased exit paths for R3 and R4-type construction. It allows about a 25% increase because, again, sprinkler systems are being used, and life safety is enhanced through the use of sprinkler systems. Locking arrangements in educational occupancies. This is primarily for schools and education occupancies across the city. It allows for several different options to be exercised by the school. This is primarily to try to solve the problem of how do we deal with school locking mechanisms there? You want kids to leave the classroom, but you also want to allow them back into the classroom at some point without locking everybody out. So there's some options on the table now that previously weren't specified in code. This is trying to provide those options for the schools, so that instead of going out and buying some, you know, $5 or $10 fix off the internet that they found, they could have an option to actually secure their doors, do it in a way that makes sense both from an egressing standpoint, as well as a safety standpoint. Another key area where we are not adopting a fire code requirement. This section is for existing buildings and deals specifically with bars and restaurants that are occupied with 300 or more people. At this point, we're not recommending adoption by the council. That's because we don't know exactly how many restaurants and bars we even have within a facility that don't have fire sprinklers. We have been pretty consistent in requiring this since the very onset of International Fire Code, so that dates back to at least the year 2000. Our expectation is that we won't find many at all, if any. But rather than adopt a code that would be enforced and required on somebody without exactly knowing what the impact of that is, we'd rather take the time to go do our homework and make sure we have dotted the i's and crossed the t's on that. Energy systems are a key area of code that's being updated, is because primarily these systems that are installed in buildings for energy systems are principally new to the market. We're talking about everything from photovoltaic systems to battery storage systems. These can be very large, in some cases quite small, but all these systems run off direct voltage, where the voltage is more than what you would recognize as being in your home. We're talking 220 and above volt. It's something that if you put it in your hand against, you'd be shocked. So this is trying to address the safety of the public, as well as the safety of firefighters, when these systems are involved in construction within a building. Protection from vehicle impact for gas stations within the city of Sioux Falls. This section of code deals directly with protecting the equipment that is above ground, pumping fuel into auto vehicles. We will judiciously use this requirement across the city. It is not intended for every gas station. The new gas station that was built on the corner of Marion and 12th Street, the new Holiday Gas Station out there, we've already done a site plan. We were able to make sure that the pumps are well away from the right-of-way. But there are other places within the city that are very proximate to the right-of-way, within 10 to 15 feet. These are the places where, if we determine that there's a problem with someone being able to drive through and not really even notice that you're going through a gas station and come out the other end and do considerable damage to the dispensers, we would use this section of code to ensure we got bollards up there to try to minimize the damage that could be done from auto traffic. Repair vehicles for compressed natural gas and liquid natural gas. This section of code speaks directly to the new technologies that are out on the market. You find that some fleets have converted already to compressed natural gas and liquid natural gas as a means of propelling their fleet vehicles. There are unique requirements here because natural gas and liquid natural gas just behaves a little bit differently than gasoline, especially when you are repairing that engine. So those requirements are in there to address those new technologies. Food truck requirements. We talked previously that this license is already issued by the police department. It is already, we already have a precursory view of this license as it comes through and is processed. We are reviewing these requirements because we have concerns with whether or not we even have the ability to ensure that the safety requirements are met, whether the food truck was built ahead of time, or it's been built post-construction, with things just being added on to it. Our principal concern are the propane tanks and how the cooking systems are being powered inside the food trucks. Short of that, the police are really covering everything else with the mobility of the vehicle and whether it's licensed to be on the street. Temporary special event structures. The code has kind of modified its view of how it deals with tents and temporary structures. I'm sure if you've been out to many of our large events during the summertime, including the golf tournament that was held last year, there are large temporary structures, as well as platforms, being built across the city. In some cases, for a golf tournament, it is just a viewing platform. In other cases, for a, for the Jazz Fest, it's just large tents. The code has really tried to redesign it so that we could fit everything under those definitions, and try to deal with all of those temporary structures in one case, in one permit style. So this is their attempt to try to bring that umbrella to this specific section of code and kind of move several different things underneath it. And with that, try to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Dean. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Councilors, do you have questions for Dean? Councilor Nightert?
Something that occurred to me, so for the, for the, for the home stuff, there's stakeholder groups and that sort of thing that they go through. You would have a very diverse group of stakeholders, you know, people who own institutions and businesses and things like that. Are there any stakeholders you bring this to, to take a look at? Or are there any entities?
Nonofficial entities that are, that would be selected and approved. We do go through a process where we share this information with fire alarm companies, as well as sprinkler companies within the city. Those are our primary customers of permit activities within the city. But we don't have a formal group of all the different stakeholders that could provide response and input on these code requirements.
And when does, when would the new codes take effect? Is it the, on the date that the ordinance becomes effective, or do these have like a time lapse?
Correct, on the date that the ordinance becomes effective.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right. Other questions for Dean? All right, I'd look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 9.
Move to approve. Second.
All right, motion by Kylie, and seconded by Sale on that. Any discussion, council? All right, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 56.
Item 56 is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the issuance of its wastewater system revenue bonds in one or more series to the South Dakota Conservancy District, authorizing the use of the proceeds thereof for capital improvements, pledging the wastewater system revenue of the city to the payment of said wastewater system revenue bonds, fixing the terms of such wastewater system revenue bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement between the city and the South Dakota Conservancy District, and authorizing the execution and delivery of such wastewater system revenue bonds to the South Dakota Conservancy District not to exceed $26,808,800.
Good evening, Ryan Johnson, with the city's Engineering Department. I have with me our bond counsel, Doug Hite, for this project, along with Diane Best, and certainly try to answer any questions you may have through the course of this presentation. Just a couple quick comments for moving forward through this, and you've seen this before, so I'll try to be quick and brief with those. Shortly after the 2010 sanitary sewer collapse off North Drive Avenue, we commissioned a study to see what improvements needed to be made downstream of those segments. That study identified four projects. We completed two of those projects. We're in the process of completing one right now. It's the Equalization Basin near Cliff Avenue and Chambers Street. This is the last piece of those projects. Very generally, that system handles about 90% of the wastewater that's conveyed through the city of Sioux Falls, so very important infrastructure for the community. Shortly after that study was done, we started the process of requesting appropriation. That first request was made in 2014 for the 2015 through 2019 capital program. And each subsequent year, we've had appropriation, and they're committed to completing this project. Last December, we requested approval to submit this loan application to the DNR. That request was approved at the city council. The Board of Natural Water and Natural Resources has met, has approved that loan, so this is the next gate in that whole process. Upon approval of this loan ordinance, we would then move forward with bidding the project. Again, you've seen portions of this before, you've seen this before. The project location is just off Bonson Avenue and Rice Street. Larger map there. Existing lift station is shown on the right-hand side of that slide. Again, main pump station. At one time, it was called the Brandon Road Pump Station. That was there long before there was any infrastructure out there. It was on the road to Brandon, and hence it was called the Brandon Road Lift Station. Has nothing to do with serving the city of Brandon or providing service to them, so just a clarity. And so we're going to retitle that to the Main Pump Station, because in essence, it's the main pump station to the water reclamation facility. It will be built on a greenfield site just north and to the east of Bonson Avenue, and the location shown there. Picture of the existing lift station in the upper-left-hand corner, and of course, the greenfield site that is located there today. Also, again, reiterate that 2014 appropriation was requested for the 2015 through 2019 capital program, and each subsequent year, those appropriations were requested and approved. And again, here now today to keep moving, keeping that project moving forward. Couple required improvements of the existing lift station. That lift station, uh, was not designed for the, uh, total flows that we foresee coming in the future. Certainly has some maintenance and accessibility issues. It was built on a very compact site. Our screening and equipment, uh, is in need of constant repair and replacement or maintenance, and so it's at the end of its useful life and in need of replacement. Goal is also to raise that facility above the 500-year floodplain. Uh, if you drive out there today, you'll see many barricades and sandbags around that facility from the recent flooding events that occurred. Improve wet well hydraulics conditions and reduce turbulence and vortex formation. Uh, it's, in essence, that's what it, what it's saying is it improves the efficiency of the pumps when you have solid hydraulics, and it also improves the lifespan of those pumps. And, uh, that lift station's got some issue with vortexing that we, we currently see and try to monitor. Electrical equipment's at the end of its useful life, over 35 years old, so the transformers and the transfer switches and down the line are in need of improvements, along with the , uh, emergency standby generator. Uh, that trailer that's showing in there actually contains the emergency generator along with the fuel tank and cords to the automatic transfer switch that would run to the facility if it were ever to go down or just laying across the concrete. Proposed pump station would be, uh, located on a large site. This was done, uh, not only for the end use, but during construction when contractors have an area to lay down and do their work, there's certainly value, uh, to the city and to the project to have that. Will meet the, uh, our long-term 50-year goals, will have any, uh, pump station that's, uh, has the capacity of, uh, 65 million gallons, but also have, uh, room for additional pump sets that, uh, can be installed and then take it out there to a much longer, longer timeframe. Certainly have generator power that would be stationary onsite and then have, uh, be a little more physically connected to the pump station and be capable of, uh, powering that entire facility. Accessibility to the existing lift station equipment is certainly going to be improved. And then, uh, as a part of this project, we would demolish that existing facility, uh, to below grade and then backfill the facility. Couple renderings. Uh, I think the neat thing or just kind of a statistic is the, the depth of this facility. Uh, you see the main floor elevation down to the lower level pump room is about 45 feet, so it's, it's pretty significant excavation to get down that low so we can, uh, get the hydraulics that we need and collect the, the wastewater and, uh, deliver it to the water reclamation facility. Couple things on the loan. It's a $24.4 million loan, uh, 2.5% interest for 20 years. Uh, does have a non-point source component, an NPS component is what we call it, of 1%, so the effective loan, uh, rate is, uh, 1.5%. And I'll make a couple comments on that NPS component in just a moment. I said the, in, uh, December of last year, the SRF loan application was approved. Design continued. The South Dakota DNR met and approved that loan on March 28th. Uh, we're here now today to talk about the bond ordinance. Uh, and this is, of course, the first reading. The second reading is scheduled for, uh, April 9th. Pending approval of all those items, we're going to move forward with, uh, advertising and bidding that project. As far as the NPS portion of it, uh, loan dollars are reduced from 2.5% to 1.5% and that 1% difference on the interest, uh, is given back to the city with the caveat that those are used for water quality improvements upstream in the watershed, in the Big Sioux River watershed. So, uh, this particular project will get $2.4 million to do those easement areas, those repairing area improvements, those bank stabilization type projects, and, uh, the list kind of goes on and those, so. With that, I do my best to entertain any questions you may have.
Thanks, Ryan. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, questions for Ryan? Counselor Naitzer?
When you say upstream, you know, if we do improvements, non-point source improvements upstream, what, what does that mean geographically? North part of the city? North part of the state?
Sure, and, and I, I know enough to be
Dangerous.
... on this
Okay.
And so I might have to retract or have someone do a little more clarity on it, but it's in the Skunk Creek Basin and the Big Sioux River Basin, and it, it extends, to my understanding, as far north, uh, it's in that, that watershed. Uh, I think most of the projects are, we're seeing the best benefit or the most benefit that's within close proximity, uh, to the city of Sioux Falls, and so it's generally Minnehaha, Moody and some, and
Okay.
Maybe even extend into Lake County, but again, there may be some clarity on that.
Okay, that helps. Thanks.
Thanks, Ryan. Other questions for Ryan on this? Counselor Staley?
Um, when we come back for the second reading, could you break down that, what we're getting for that 20, was it 24 million? And I'm assuming the legal fees and everything's incorporated into that?
Yeah, that's project cost.
So, yeah, a little breakdown is just to how that breaks out. I'd appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions for Ryan? All right, I'd look for a, uh, motion, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 9 for this item?
Move to approve.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Kylie on that, seconded by Erickson. Any other discussion? All right, a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Naitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 57.
Item 57 is a first reading. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 30, City Council Subchapter Presiding Officer's Duties.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Brecky? Just, the mayor needed to step out for a moment and pass the gavel just to make sure you're aware of that. Uh, Counselor Brecky, do you want to address this item?
Thank you, that did catch me off guard. Um, you have before you a proposed ordinance to codify the election process that takes place when the council elects its leadership. Um, I've done some research and there'll be four other documents which we'll take a look at here, which give the history of how the council has elected its chair and vice chair, you know, starting back in 1997. Um, and when I was going through this process, it did actually, uh, my memory, it jogged my memory and I did recall some of it, you know, from having, um, been there when that occurred. The reason I think it needs to be codified is because it has kind of bounced around in city attorney opinion, city attorney memorandum, and, uh, you know, and then an official resolution in 2010. So it's one of those procedures that I think it needs to be just a solid, stable procedure that's in ordinance, and, um, and if it changes, then it's, it's important enough that it's the kind of procedure that needs public notice and public involvement. So I decided to kind of stabilize it by proposing an ordinance. Basically, I, I would describe it as a, it's pretty vanilla procedure. I mean, it really is straight out of Robert's Rules of Order. It does, um, I think, take the best of what's been used in the past and then maybe adds a little more to that. Um, the only substantive change in it is I, I did, I am proposing a change from having the council chair and vice chair elected on the night that the, uh, that the new city council members are inducted into office. You know, how it currently exists is, you know, you're inducted into office, you take the oath of office in the afternoon, and then that very night, you have to elect your council leadership for the next year. And I think that that's, uh, kind of difficult for incoming new council members to wrap their arms around, and so I thought, um, just a small term of office, just a small period, and so I just added a month to that. So instead of doing it in May, it would be done in June. Um, so other than that, there's really nothing substantive. Uh, the other thing that we did add, however, is, um, we did deal with the issue of vacancy, and it's kind of complicated language, but, you know, in summary, what it really does, and it's in that B1 language, and what it really does is it kind, kind of counts for any sort of vacancy. Um, if it's a vacancy that's a result of resignation or, um, terming out or, um, not getting re-elected, um, that might be a period of months, and that's dealt with by having a special election, um, so which would be done separate and then, and then later, you know, it would be followed by, for, that would just take care of the partial term, and then there'd be a full election, a regular election, which would, um, allow candidates to then run or rerun to do, to do the whole term. And then there is a provision in there to cover that short period, you know, between election, uh, and taking office, and then actually, it's sort of like a month lag period, and that language is the language that says or until a successor is elected by the city council. And for that period, um, it, it can be done by following an additional section, which isn't actually up here, but it's 300082, and it basically allows, uh, the vice chair, if the vice chair is unable to serve as acting mayor, the city council chair may designate a city council member to serve as acting mayor in his or her absence. So, so before someone left, they could designate their predecessor to handle that a period of actually covering the election. So, you know, to actually administer the election, if you will. So I think we've covered all of the vacancy potential issues. We certainly did spin it around a lot, and, and that was what that section was intended to do. Um, just to give you the history then, it starts back in 1997 with a request from the mayor, then mayor Gary Hanson, and the council members to Janet Brecky, city attorney back at that time, and they were asking the city attorney's office to propose for them, you know, a procedure for electing their officials. And there was sort of a unique request in there, and it's kind of covered in this opinion, and it's just interesting history. Um, one of the things that they had done is prior to this request, they had actually, the procedure that they had in place was, they called it a passing of the feather, and they had determined that they wanted leadership to be shared, and so they, you know, they would just, they would rotate, and then it was a Native American, um, procedure that they were following, and they would just, everybody would have a chance to lead. It was a shared leadership model. And then what happened was there were some council members who did not want to be a leader. They wanted, they, they were not comfortable with leadership, assuming a leadership role, and so then they were looking for a different process. And I think it was after that that they started talking about, you know, and what eventually ended up in, in the request for this opinion. And, um, at that time, one of their concerns was the question of a secret ballot because they were concerned about offending each other. And so they were talking about a secret ballot, and I just think it's interesting. Um, that was clearly something not recommended by the city attorney's office, and you can see all of the legal, um, the reasons legally for why that, you know, really kind of is a violation of the spirit and intent of open meeting laws and that the public has a right to know the process and see the process inside and out, and so it was recommended or discouraged, you know, that they should, you know, not, not have that. One of the interesting things about the history is it's the voting issue, how, how the vote is taken, whether it be roll call, um, voice vote, that has kind of been the thing that's been kind of an issue and changed over time. If you look at the next item, May 1st, that was in 2001, then four years later, they're now asking again, this would be council member Jamison asking again the city attorney for an, for a proposed procedure, and, you know, we, again, just kind of followed, which is, this is really just a summary of that same opinion that you just read, and recommending, you know, just a Robert's Rule procedure, and, and that time, we recommended a, a voting roll call, a roll call vote. And I do remember when they implemented this, you know, it kind of, it's kind of funny, you know, at the time, they weren't expecting it, but they just unexpectedly, and, and Mayor Hanson was there chairing the meeting, they unexpectedly broke down into a four and four vote, and Mayor Hanson looked around and it was just, nobody was expecting that, and he just, you know, he just stood up and he says, you know what? I don't think this is right. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna elect, I don't think I should be choosing, you know, who the leader is. And so he just politely passed the gavel and then left and said, you guys, you guys have to figure out yourself, this yourself. And I think from, from that came a couple things. One was there later was a determination, and you'll see that in this current one too, we left it in there, um, that there would be a coin flip if it kept breaking down to four and four and they couldn't get past the four and four, then the ultimate decision could be done by a coin flip. So there's always, you know, little factual scenarios as to why different things happen. But it was after that then, if you look then in the 3610 Resolution, which was, that would be nine years later, and now they're putting something down in resolution, um, and in there, it actually says that, you know, the mayor shall not be there. So I think that, again, that was a result of a practice, that, you know, they, the mayor stopped coming, you know, when they had that, and then that's when I think they incorporated in the coin flip option. But then it switched to, uh, voting shall be by voice vote, and, um, you know, uh, you know, so that was, you know, just a little bit of a change again. So, and then, so what I did was, again, I looked at all this history, you can see it's kind of bounced around. I do think it's a procedure, needs to be codified, needs to be in ordinance. And again, what we did was just, it's more or less what we do, a little more. I mean, I really kind of just followed pretty much straight, you know, just a, a, a Robert's Rules version. Tom Greco and Jim David worked very carefully with me on, let's just get a good standard, good solid election procedure in here, and, and that'll be able to do it. It has a little nuances, it has a coin flip in there. Um, we do do a roll call voice vote, you know, again, and with that backdrop of, you know, no secret ballot, not only no secret ballot, but not just a voice vote, ayes and nays, which is how we did it, you know, last year, but, you know, a roll call voice vote, so you actually declare, you know, the person that you're voting for. So I think it's the best of, of everything that we've had so far, you know, just maybe a little bit more, but I think it's a, a good procedure, and I'm ready to take any questions if you have them at this time.
Is anyone from the public who would like to speak on this topic? Counselors, do you have any questions for your colleague on this? Okay, I'd look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, April 9?
Move to approve.
Second, Selberg.
Motion by Kylie and seconded by Selberg. Any discussion on this, counsel? I will let you sit back down so you can vote on this if you'd like, and I will call for the vote.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Naitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 58.
Item 58 is a resolution of intent to enter into a lease of municipal real property.
Stacy, let you speak to this.
Thank you, Mayor. City administration's contemplating entering into leasing multiple properties that the city owns. SDCL 9-12-5.2 requires that if those leases exceed 120 days and $500, there needs to be a notice of intent to lease, and so that's what's being presented here, uh, tonight. In the event that this passes, then thereafter, the city would negotiate those leases individually, and they would come back before the council for their consideration.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Stacy. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, do you have any questions on this? I'd look for a, a motion to approve this item?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Selberg.
All right, move to approve, Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion? A vote, please.
Councilmembers Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Naitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 59.
Item 59 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Pine Knoll, Pine Knoll addition. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero.
Uh, this is the preliminary subdivision plan that went along with item number, our rezone item number 50. It's Kelly Nielsen's property at Ellis and West 22nd Street. It's about 22.42 acres in size. As I indicated before, they're looking at doing some single-family residential and then one office lot.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? All right, he's just leaving. Thought he was gonna speak. Uh, counselors, do you have questions for Jason on this? Uh, motions to approve?
Move approval. Naitzer?
Second, Erickson.
Okay, move to approve. Naitzer, seconded by Erickson. Any discussion? A vote, please.
Councilmember Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Naitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 60.
Item 60 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Burns Addition.